All right, please stand. Pledge allegiance. Please be seated. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment meeting. On date August 7th, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Pivotal Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Emily, maybe we have a roll call.
Ms. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner? Absent. Ms. Testaverde?
Absent.
Mr. Singh? Absent. Ms. Gomez? Absent. Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Thank you. We welcome Emily Van Driel from the planning office who's going to sit in tonight for Maureen, who could not make that for personal reasons. Ryan McCarthy is on the dais tonight as our professional engineer. I will announce quickly that there's only going to be one application this evening, regardless of what the agenda. There has been cancellations. I'll read them in when we get to the applications, but there will only be one if you're here if you're here in the courtroom to witness one. It's only the first one, Phoenix Realty. All the others are off. I'll actually, I'll read them in in a little bit. Board members for the housekeeping business, we only have the minutes, and that's July 17th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Absent any comments for additions, deletions? I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Daskey, I'd ask you at this time, would you please swear in the professional, Mr. Ryan McCarthy? Thank you very much. We have reached the application phase, and as I said, the only one that's going to be on, I'll read in last, although they're present here. Forty-one dish twenty-two-four Z is here, Hussein. That's a twelve Yosemite Court. It's a continuation. It was adjourned. That matter has been adjourned until September 4th without further notice. You're here on that matter. It will not be heard this evening. Will be back on the agenda September 4th. Forty-four dash twenty-two-four Z, that's three-one-two Spring Valley Road LLC. That's a physical location, three-twelve Spring Valley Road. That's for major preliminary and final site plan with a de-variants application. Applicant seeks to have the residential use remain while utilizing the property to store commercial vehicles. That matter will not be heard this evening. It will be placed back on the agenda for November 6th with further notice. You're here on that matter. Will not be heard. And finally, thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four Z, Big Three Properties LLC. That's nineteen-hundred English Town Road, seeking from a major preliminary and final site plan applicant proposes to construct a six-thousand-foot square, a six-thousand-square-foot storage building. Once again, that matter will not be heard this night. It will be placed on the agenda for November 6th with further notice. That does bring us to our only application of the night. It's fifty-four dash twenty-two-four Z. This is a continuation, Phoenix Realty Developers Zone SD1, block one-oh-five-one, lot two-nine-point-one-four. Physical location on that is twelve Industrial Drive, Keyport mailing address. This for Bus Depot, major preliminary and final site plan with C and D variants. Donna Jennings Esquire for the applicant. Ms. Jennings?
Thank you. Good evening for the record. I'm Donna Jennings. I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer. I do notice that you only have five members. Normally, I would not go forward, but this is deemed inherently beneficial use. I'd like to at least put the testimony on, and unless there's some comments that I feel are going to be detrimental to the client, I would ask that the vote be carried.
I think what we can do at your, at your call, you never know, somebody else might become one in here. But if not, there'll be a transcript of the hearing. And if, if, if this is what you'd rather, I think with the chairman's permission, you vote on, we'll vote on it in the next meeting after at least one more person reads the transcript.
Or we'll just see how it goes, and maybe we'll vote at the end. Yeah. Okay, so again, the applicant is here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with use variances and bulk variances for property located at twelve Industrial Drive, identified as block ten-fifty-one, lot twenty-nine-point-fourteen, on the township's tax maps. The applicant is proposing to add a bus transportation use as a tenant to the existing office warehouse space, utilizing approximately thirty-seven-hundred square feet of the existing building space, in addition to other improvements. As you're aware, the applicant was previously here before the board on May 7th, 2025. Since then, the applicant has submitted revised plans to address the concerns raised by both the board and your consultants at the prior hearing, as will be more specifically explained by the applicant's site engineer. Among other things, revised plans provide for a total of thirty parking spaces for the proposed bus transportation use, including twenty-four for larger twenty-eight-foot-long buses, and six for smaller buses. A new loading bay has been added to the front of the property, and the parking area in the front yard has also been reconfigured. The applicant is also here seeking to lift condition thirteen from a prior resolution, which was memorialized on November 6th, 2014. That condition states, quote, "The applicant agreed that the only existing outdoor storage which shall be permitted on the site is for the existing granite contractor, sand and gravel for the applicant, truck and machinery for the applicant, and nine outdoor storage trailers for the applicant's storage of materials, inventories, and supplies in concrete block bins. The applicant shall provide a revised site plan indicating the exact location of these facilities. The number of trailers for outdoor storage shall be limited to nine." So the applicant seeks to lift that condition to allow for the parking of the thirty buses. In the review letters submitted by the board's consultants, they actually believe that the condition should be modified so that in a, if the board were to vote favorably on the application, that there would be a condition in that approval indicating that we are limited to the thirty buses being stored in the rear area, similar to the condition where it was only nine outdoor storage trailers. With that, I would just note that we did receive two new review letters, and for the record, it was the July 31st, 2025 review by Mr. Tom Miller from the fire district, and then we received the review from the planner and the engineer dated August 6th, 2025, which has been reviewed by the applicant and the consultants, and we will address those concerns. So this evening, I'm bringing back up our site engineer, Walt Hopkins, who's sitting to my right, and then we have a professional planner who will put on testimony indicating that, in our opinion, the applicant has satisfied both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the use variance and the bulk variances and the site plan approval. So with that, we could probably just have Mr. Hopkins re sworn in.
He's already previously put, put under oath for the last, consider yourself still under oath.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Hopkins, if you could kind of walk the board through revisions that you've made since the last time when we were here, and how they address concerns raised by the board and its consultants. Thank you. And if you're going to rely on any exhibits, let's have them mark into evidence.
Okay, so first off, the, well, let's see, I think we can, might be able to do this without exhibits with the site plan. I have a color rendered version of the site. If it's something that we need to bring up, I certainly can. Just, the board is obviously oriented to the site. They're familiar with it. Ms. Jennings expressed the, the address in the lot and the block. The revisions that we've made from a high level from the last time we were here before you, we reconfigured and reduced the number of bus parking spaces in the rear, something that the board concentrated on. Reconfigured the parking in the front of the building to preserve some green area, but also added a, a loading dock. It's very consistent with the other properties in the area. One-way circulation on the eastern driveway, that was a comment that somebody from the board, I think, brought up. So the eastern driveway, which is a bit narrow, will be restricted to one way in. The other will remain a two-way, as it's a shared driveway with the adjacent property. There's also comments and, and discussion about the loading areas around the building. They've been clarified and striped, and we believe we addressed most, if not all, of the previous comments, including revising the curb radii, which is something that we needed relief from. We no longer really need relief. Specifically with the, with the parking area, maybe if we could just flip to the next, maybe the third, there we go. That one there is good. Would it be, would it be easier to, to, for me to distribute a?
How do we do that?
Yeah, okay. So what I'll be referring to is a color rendered version of the site plan prepared by our office, last revised July 15th, 2025, and this does have aerial photography overlaid on it.
And that would be marked as exhibit A3. That's what I had as the next number.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Jennings, you want A3 just to be this page or the entire site plan?
I think just this page, because the site plan, I don't think that needs to be marked into evidence.
So to describe the parking, twenty-two spaces are required by ordinance.
So this is understood, this is dated eight-six-twenty-five, this page?
Yes, so the, the exhibit itself is dated August 6th.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daskey. Can't slip anything by him. So the parking, your ordinance requires twenty-two parking spaces, which we provide. Fifty-two are actually provided, including three EV spaces. The bus parking in the rear, if you recall, was much more than thirty spaces. It's been reduced to, to thirty. Twenty-four of those are the large bus parking spaces, and six are the smaller bus parking spaces. The configuration that we've shown and demonstrated on our plan is similar to the aerial view that is in your, your township professionals' letter. There are twenty-two passenger vehicle spaces that are provided. Previously, there were twenty-five. We reconfigured them because of the loading dock in the front. So now there are eight parking spaces along the front, four on either side. There are two on, along the western side of the building, two along the rear, and then there's ten parking spaces in the rear, which butt up against the, the bus parking areas. Loading dock has been added to the front. The, the tenant in the front needed their own loading dock, so the applicant thought that it would be a good time to do that now. Again, this is consistent with what's in the area. And the loading spaces around the building have been clearly identified and will be striped as, as part of this application. The, I believe one of the comments was a site triangle should be shown, and we've, we've indicated that on the plan. It does overlap the adjacent property, and we will be required to obtain a site triangle easement from them. As far as circulation, the eastern driveway will be one-way. There was also some concerns raised at the last meeting about it being narrow, and that there were air conditioning units and other appartnances along that side of the building. So we've restricted it to, to one-way and striped out those areas, so it's got a five-foot striped area and eighteen to nineteen feet of driveway. Your fire official had a concern with this. He requires twenty feet. That, I believe, is number one in, in his review letter. So we called him to discuss this with him. There is actually twenty-four feet of pavement available to him. We explained that to him and, and believe that he is okay with that. When we come out closer to the, to the, to industrial drive, there's the parking area of parking spaces that are twenty feet long, and then there's a, an eighteen-foot wide driveway. He was a little concerned about that, so in order to get the, the twenty feet that he would require, he, he agreed that if we shortened those parking spaces to a typical eighteen, which is customary, however, would require relief from your ordinance, that would give him his twenty feet available for his, for his vehicle. So those are changes. If, if the applicant is approved, we would make a condition of approval, make those changes to the satisfaction of both your engineer and, and the fire official. There's also discussion in the fire official's letter, as well as your professionals, about turning templates. We will add the turning templates. I think there was one needed or requested in the back northwest corner. We've demonstrated that in the office, but we'll provide that to your professionals. There's a bit of a conflict on the east side that we will also modify that turning template as well. In reviewing this with the, with the applicant, we as engineers showed the, the vehicles kind of backing up to the building, but in reality, he, he explained they, they parallel parked next to the building, which is a little bit typical. So when we show that on, on the turning template, it'll, it'll show plenty of clearance. In addition, again, being engineers and being conservative, we've shown thirty-foot-long vehicles that were going to access the building, and he says in reality, they're, they're twenty feet long.
How long are the normal school buses?
So the school buses, which we don't have a problem with the conflict, there's, the larger ones are thirty-eight feet, and the smaller ones are twenty feet long. And those are dimensioned in the back specifically to those, those different lengths. Fire official also requested that we stripe and sign the fire lanes, which of course we would agree to do. There were some other, there were some communication issues, I think, in the letter, but he also requested a Knox box, which I've been told by the applicant actually currently exists there, so we'll either add it or, or let the fire official know where it is. There, there was a comment also in the review letter about a twenty-foot wetland buffer and an encroachment. That was from a, a prior application, and it was just a dimension line. I, I was the engineer for that, and we clarified that with the prior engineer, so there is no encroachment. It's not shown on these plans. I, I think it was from a prior review letter. Also, there's some comments about refuse and recycling. I don't know if we talked about this last time, but it is kept inside the building, and it's brought out for the hauler on, on days of collection.
How is it brought out? To the front?
Just outside the building. Not, not to the, not to the street, no. Just outside of the building.
So there's a carter that comes on, onsite?
Yes, sir. Private.
Are there dumpsters outside?
No.
Thank you.
Sure. There, there was a few other questions about bus maintenance. Any maintenance that would occur to the buses would be inside the building. We have concrete curbing in the front, which is a bit different than it was before. We have curb stops that are shown there, which probably don't need to be. We can work that out with your, with your engineer, whether he, he would still like them or not. And that's, I think, the majority of, of the comments. I, I think I've kind of got them, given you a, a overview of the revisions made, how the site will operate, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board has. Hit on anything that I didn't address directly in the, in your professionals' letter.
Mr. McCarthy?
So I'm more or less just going to go through our letter and just go comment by comment to make sure that we addressed most of the things. I, I have most of it highlighted here.
Just to, we can address, I think, everything, but if there's anything specifically you want me to say that we will address, I, I can certainly do that.
I guess we could start with... So the first question I have is regarding the, I guess it's just the limits of full depth pavement. It's kind of just a strange layout on the plan. I think we should just make a general note that says it'll just be determined in the field by the township engineer or the board engineer, whichever is deemed fit for that. We did have some concerns about the, I guess, the ADA parking on the side of the building. It's not quite clear what the accessible route into the building would be. I do see the parking on the side, but it's just unclear if there's doors on the side or what, what kind of the, the route is for that.
We'll clarify that, though. That's part of the revision, was that we aligned those parking spaces with the doors.
Okay.
I guess we didn't clarify where the doors actually were.
Okay.
How many ADA spaces do you have?
We exceed the requirement. We have one, two, we have two spaces.
Two?
Yes, sir.
And you have two EV spaces?
We have three EV spaces.
So that was, that would be another comment. I know typically, one of the ADA spaces is supposed to be EV, so that would just be another comment that we'd have.
Yes.
There, there was one concern. I, I just noticed it wasn't in our letter. The cross slope along the parking on the left-hand side in the front of the property is at ten percent, which is, I feel it's a little steep, just typically usually around between four and five percent. When you're opening the door, that's when it kind of gets away from you, so anything over that? If there's any way to, to look at maybe regrading that area, or I don't know if you're, if you have a different feeling about it.
I'm certainly open to looking at it and reducing it, to work with your office to do that.
Okay. One of the comments I had from last time doesn't look like it was addressed, was regarding the, the site lighting in the rear of the property, just generally with the, the hours of operation, especially in the winter time, when the sun comes up a little bit later in the day. It doesn't look like there's any proposed lighting, or at least no isolux lines that we could review to show what the existing lighting is. So I think we would, we would request as a condition of approval that at least some type of lighting be provided in the rear, just during those, especially during the dark hours, when you do have the bus drivers coming in and out of the site.
What, what hours would you need the lighting for in the back?
So they start six in the morning, and then they're off of the site by four-thirty-five, so.
You say four-thirty-five?
Four-thirty, or, or five o'clock. We'll say five o'clock.
We'd need it in the wintertime.
We would, sure. Mostly.
Yeah. It looks like some of the, the proposed paving is outside of your property, and it's on the adjacent property. I know that there was an easement for access, but I don't know if there's any language in there about maintaining or providing any improvement. So as a condition of approval, or at least before the time of actually doing that construction, we would need some kind of signed agreement from the neighboring property, just to permit you to do that.
That shouldn't be a problem. We both represent the neighborhood.
Okay. You have to excuse me. I'm going to quickly go through some of the planning comments here from Vina. I just want to make sure we're addressing all of her comments that she had. To the outdoor storage, we're going to discuss a little bit more. I guess that was one of the things that is going to be requested to be changed from the previous resolution. We can, we'll finish with the engineering stuff, and that'll, we can get into the...
Mr. Houdak is going to be testifying as a planner in a couple of minutes, so I suppose.
Let me see here. So the non-residential affordable housing development fees as a condition of approval, any of those improvements? I'm not sure. We could work it out with the, with the tax collector on that. I'm not entirely sure what those, what the value would be, but just in case there is any.
Yeah, I think it's probably exempt, because we're not changing the building.
I don't, I don't think so either, but just... Right.
But we'll, we'll agree to pay something if there's a requirement.
Okay. Just give me one second here. Trash closures we talked about, the guide rail. I know we, we quickly kind of spoke about that last time. It is indicated on the plan that it is substandard. It's substandard. I think we would probably request it to be replaced, just because the idea is that it's providing a safety for people to not drive off the edge.
My professional opinion, I've seen it. It's in decent shape. If DOT were putting one in today, it would probably look a little different, and we will have to accept whatever the board decides.
I mean, we could, we could obviously meet out onsite to review it. We could make it a condition that it just be determined in the field, and if at that time, we can just add a note to the plan to make it that way.
Okay.
So for the striping, it sounds like there's going to be some, some modified plans that come through with the striping on the side from the fire marshal's comments. We did just have some concerns going less than a twenty-four-foot drive aisle, and that striping might not be just enough to make sure that we're protecting that edge. So is there any other things that you could possibly provide, or any other thoughts on that? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think that would work. So the ADA, so, and I guess on the revised plan, we would like to show at least the doors are the accessible path from those ADA parking stalls, just to make sure that we're actually getting there. If you could provide some testimony regarding the sidewalk, I guess the condition of it along industrial drive, and if there's any improvements that are proposed as a part of this project?
So there's no, there's no sidewalk along industrial drive. There's, on the side of industrial drive, there's no sidewalk along Route 35, so we won't propose it. Quite frankly, in my professional opinion, I would not want to encourage pedestrian traffic along industrial drive. Any of you who've walked or driven by there, it's, it's, it's quite active at times.
And plus, on our site, you're having buses coming in and out.
Sure.
It's not great to have pedestrians walking across our driveways.
Okay. Let's see here. So for stormwater management, I, I just have a comment here requesting some testimony, but I think basically, we're just going to look for that revised report now that some of the proposed porous pavement and those nature things have been moved. I think we were also looking before to do at least some type of investigation regarding the existing drainage on site. It looks like there's an inlet that goes to a manhole with perforated pipe, so we just need to investigate that further, just to confirm that it is in good condition, and if at the time of that inspection, if it's determined that it is failing in any way, or if it needs any repairs, that that would be done at that time.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'm not aware of any issues out there. That was an initial, that was one of Vina's most important, was that I should... That was an initial, that was one of Vina's most important, was that I show that and demonstrate it, so if it's something that we need further clarification, we can.
Okay. To have one of the ADA. Okay, that's, that's all the comments that I have. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, we threw references page 10, number 38.
Sure.
I'm sorry, 39. Mr. Hopkins indicated that the garbage is hand-carried out and there is a dumpster. Should it be shown?
Did you say there was or wasn't?
The comment is that it's, that there's none shown on the plan.
Right, there is no dumpster. They wheel them out.
That's what I asked. You said there's a dumpster in the property.
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have misunderstood. There are no dumpsters on the, on the property.
So you wheel the garbage down to the front?
No, they just take it outside the building and then a truck circulates, a private hauler and picks it up.
Okay. I think we would, I know we have other turning templates, just so that, we would just like to know what type of vehicle that is, just to ensure that with these revised conditions that it can still make that, that turn.
That's all, Mr. McCarthy, for now?
That's all I have, thank you.
Remember, it's on my left. Mr. Scagno?
Thank you. Presently, are you using the company, the facility now for servicing buses? I see buses in the rear and I did see a couple in the bay. So are they being serviced now?
I don't know if they're being serviced. I know the buses are there when we have it on the aerial.
So you're already acting for the buses? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riza?
Yes, sir.
Vice chair?
Yeah, I have a question. Your oil refuges that you have, you have two of them on your site, correct?
I'm sorry?
The, the oil. When you repair the buses, you have oil collection areas.
I'm not aware of any. Does it mean that they're not there?
We could probably have the, is that, I'm assuming that's property owner, we could probably have him fill in the...
Well, yeah, I'd like that clarified and how it's picked up.
Sure. Okay.
Well, hold on, hold on.
We'll get you sworn in when they're done here.
When they're done, we're going to come up. I don't know if you were put under oath last time.
I don't think so.
I don't believe you testified.
And actually, I think what Mr. Scagno's saying is you're actually here to try and legitimize that you have the buses on the property already.
That's correct.
So that can be on the record, that you're legitimizing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews, anything from you?
Nothing.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
I did have one last comment. I'm sorry, I just remembered. The concrete wheel stops that are proposed for the larger buses, looking at the overhang, I think it's, we'll just shift them back a little bit.
Yes. And we'll also align the passenger ones. That was one of your comments.
Perfect.
We're going to address all your comments. If there's something specific you want to hear, that's fine, but we're going to address all your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
As written on that memo, Mr. Hopkins, it appears that either things all have been satisfactorily addressed or will be satisfactorily addressed, right?
Yes, sir.
So as part of the record, you're going to agree with what, what the inferences were by the township professionals?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have another witness, sir?
Yes, so we'll have, yeah, that's okay. Ash, why don't you come on up? I know, but I can't testify. I'm just the attorney. You've got to get sworn in and testify. Although I do get accused of testifying sometimes.
Sir, would you raise your right hand before you sit?
Sit down, so you don't hurt yourself.
Oh, I see. I didn't see that came.
Yeah, take your time.
That rolls, so please be careful. All right, sir.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Give us your full name and spell your last.
Ashok, A-S-H-O-K, last name B as in boy, H-O-J-W-A-N-I.
Okay, and just for the record, could you just indicate or confirm that you are the owner of the property?
Yes, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, and that we are presenting this application on your behalf?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the bus company is a tenant of yours?
Yes.
Okay, so there's been some questions with respect to how the bus company handles the oil when they're there servicing the bus?
I have an email from the tenant. I can read it to you.
Well, you must know how you take care of the oil, don't you?
I don't. They do it.
Well, how do they do it?
Okay, just explain how they do it.
So the disposal of oil and all other additives in compliance of waste, waste oil stored in a 330 gallon tote that sits on the top of a spill containment basis, as well as the 55-gallon dumps for other additives, also on spill containment basis. We then have a certified outside company that comes and takes away all the waste and oil and other additives.
So it sounds like they're all in spill containment areas and that they're picked up by a certified hauler.
And you would be, somebody there is getting rid of that in accordance with the standards required by the state of New Jersey as to where they landfill them or get rid of it.
Correct.
Correct. Is that to your understanding as well?
Yes. Yeah. I did have one question, just regarding the loading in the front. Do you, do you know what that is going to be used for, just out of curiosity? I'm not sure.
So the loading dock in the front is a question because we, that's the biggest area that the tenant is occupying and he has a lot of heavy machines that come in for servicing and they are not able to unload it on the side and they need to load it, load and unload from the front.
So is the, I guess is the intent to service other type of equipment in addition to buses?
No.
So there's a couple tenants in the...
There's a couple of...
Oh, oh, okay. Understand. Thank you.
Does the tenant have access to the sides?
Yes.
But there's, there's some reason that that...
Yeah, because the, actually, they service the ship engines, turbines. So there, it's very hard for them to unload on the side of the building, so they will just go in and pick it up in the front and bring it back in.
I'm sorry, I have another question. So that when they're unloading a ship turbine, is it an 18-wheeler? I would assume that's delivering...
No, they come on a flatbed, 20-foot flatbed.
So it's like one at a time gets delivered?
One at a time, yeah.
It's not hanging out in the road when they're unloaded?
No, no, no.
Okay, good.
Most often, it would not be in use, probably, other than when there's a delivery or a pickup.
Exactly. It's only for when they deliver and take it back.
I think that it might be easier for you to answer this question as well, that I know at the last hearing, there was some discussion regarding the parking of the bus drivers who will be arriving to the site and then how that's all going to kind of play out with trying to maneuver buses. So if you could provide some testimony regarding what, how, I guess how that currently operates and if, what the proposed would be.
What happens is there are a couple of spots that are open already, so the driver comes in, he parks his vehicle there and picks his bus and go. So another driver comes in, he brings his car, he parks an empty spot and picks up his bus and go. And that's how it rotates.
There's 30 buses.
And 22 spots.
No, they park on the same spot where the bus is parked.
Oh, okay.
They pull their bus out and pull into the park, their own?
No, they park, like, let's say they park two, two of the parking spaces, they take it. So now they took out two buses already. So whoever comes next is going to park it in the empty bus parking spot and pulls out his own bus, so then another gets vacant and that's how it's recycled.
Thank you for that info.
You're welcome, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Counselor?
Mr. Buncho, could you do me a favor? Spell your first name for me.
A as in apple, S-H-O-K.
I'm sorry?
A as in apple, S as in sugar, H-O as in orange, K as in kite.
I think I have it, but thank you. Ms. Jennings will correct me when I prepare the resolution.
Thank you.
It'll be fine.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Okay.
And thank you, sir, for, please be careful with that chair.
Yes.
This time, I'm going to call our professional planner, Bob Hudak.
Mr. Hudak, would you raise your right hand? Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Tell me.
I do.
Give us your full name, spell your last.
Yes, Robert, R-O-B-E-R-T, Hudak, H-U-D-A-K. I'm a licensed professional planner with inside engineering. Before I begin and go through my CD and all, I do have one exhibit prepared by Beacon Planning dated 5/1/25. It's an aerial of the subject property. Do you want me to enter that into evidence now?
Yeah, we'll identify it for the record as A4.
A4.
And that was prepared by Beacon Planning?
Correct.
And what was the date on it?
5/1/25.
5/1/25. And it's an aerial of the area?
Aerial exhibit, yes.
Aerial exhibit, okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those who may be watching, you'll give your credentials and summary of your background?
Absolutely. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. You have my professional planning license and I am accredited by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been a planner now for approximately 12 years or so. I've been accepted as a witness in numerous boards throughout the state and middlesex.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll accept your expertise.
Thank you.
So if you could, Mr. Hudak, you understand that the applicant is seeking both a use variance and bulk variance relief in addition to the site plan approval? If you could just, for the record, indicate that you've had an opportunity to review the application, the township ordinance and master plan and the site?
I have and have visited the site as well.
And if you could just, from your planning perspective, go through the positive and negative criteria and opine as to whether or not you would think the applicant satisfies the same?
Yes. So as I'm sure the board is aware, this is a unique site. Property is split zone between the SD1 zone, which is the front portion of the property, and the ER zone, which is in the rear section of the property. The SD1 zone permits the proposed use, permits the bus transportation or bus yard. The ER zone is a little more restrictive, permitting a variety of uses, including highway and street right-ofways, cemeteries, fairgrounds, golf courses and other types of amenity uses like this, amateur baseball fields and recreation spaces, but not the bus depot. So we, in order to get approval, we need to seek D1 relief because it does encompass the whole property, even though it's only in the rear portion that we're seeking this, that require this relief. In addition, we're seeking C variance relief for the minimum landscape area ratio. We have a requirement of .4, where .21 exists and .18 is proposed. The location of the parking within the front yard, which is, the board is aware, we are parking in the front yard, and the minimum side yard setback, which is existing 24 feet. We're not exacerbating that in any way, but it is in existing condition where 25 feet is required. There's also design exception relief, providing gravel parking in the rear lot as parking areas, which is required to be surfaced by petumas or concrete pavement, providing the eight-foot depth for the EV spaces where 20 feet is required. And as noted, this is due to accommodate the comments of the fire official to provide that 20-foot emergency vehicle access along the easternly elevation. And also the parking in the front yard, it's in both the zoning and the design sections of the ordinance, so it sort of covers both angles there. And finally, as our attorney opined, we are requesting relief from condition 13 to amend condition 13 to qualify for our use versus the existing, the granite contractor that previously existed on the site. So the subject property is located at 12 Industrial Drive, is situated along the northwest side of the same. The parcel is improved with multi-tended building, including a contractor yard, warehousing and office uses. The building consists of six tenant spaces. The bus transportation use is proposed to occupy unit four. Site's improved with drive aisles and rear outdoor parking areas. And we've noted what the includes, the proposed improvements are, including the provision for parking along industrial road frontage for 10 vehicles, with five-stripe parking spaces along the building's southwest elevation, and a realignment of the rear gravel area to provide delineated parking for the school buses. Prior uses of the rear outdoor storage area will be eliminated in favor of the school bus storage use. Proposed school bus storage area will respect the disturbed area associated with prior outdoor storage uses. Of note, 22 parking spaces that we heard are the required and proposed, where there were firmly no spaces, and 52 spaces are proposed, including 24 spaces for buses, consisting of, as noted by our engineer, six 12-by-20 spaces and 24 12-by-38 spaces, which presents an improvement over the existing conditions. The property is located within an industrial portion of the community and it is bordered by industrial and commercial and religious uses to the east, industrial, commercial uses to the west, residential, commercial and religious uses to the north. I would say that the, as you could see on the map, actually, I had a, did it, when I went to the site today, noted, and also through Google Earth, you'll see that the residence uses are quite a distance away from our subject property. And to the, to the south, we have industrial, commercial and educational uses. Now, with respect to the township's master plan, the 1987 master plan stated goals and objectives do not directly address commercial development within the community. However, the 2007 master plan reexamination report noted objectives from the 2000 reexamination report, including as objectives, improving the balance between non-residential and residential development to achieve a stronger tax base and enacting land use policy changes to promote improvement in the ratio of radibles to population. The May 2013 Land Use Plan element amendment describes the SD special development zones as zones that are established, which will provide new development opportunities for large-scale service and light manufacturing uses with appropriate supporting facilities. Subsequent examination reports note the continued validity of these goals. Now, of course, as the board is well aware, municipal land use law outlines 16 purposes of zoning, which relate to the following proposed school transportation use. First of all is purpose A, the general welfare purpose of zoning. And as I'll discuss in a little detail in a few minutes, facilities for parking and maintaining school buses have been found as inherently beneficial and therefore serve by the nature of their use alone, the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. I offer that we also advance purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The parcel is in a split zone between the ER and SD1 zones, and the proposed bus transportation use, while not permitting the ER zone, overall is a commercial use, which is envisioned in this specific area. I also offer that we advance purpose M to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development in view of lessening the cost of such development and to promote the more efficient use of land. The rear storage area exists and is proposed to be reconfigured in order to better provide parking for the site and to negotiate the site as well for both vehicles and buses. I also offer that it advance purpose H, the free flow of traffic, and purpose A, the general welfare and safety purposes of zoning. Now, regarding the inherently beneficial use status of this, of this proposal, as noted within the Cox book, the case Scholastic Buses Company versus Zoning Board of Adjustment, the court found that facilities for storing and maintaining school buses are inherently beneficial uses. Specifically, the court says that they are, they are necessarily accessory to school buildings themselves. This includes even cases where the proposed facility is in an industrial zone and not immediately in the vicinity of any school building. So in essence, they are supportive of the school use. They are part and parcel of, of educational uses. I mean, most children do take buses to school in this day and age. The concept of inherently beneficial uses was created to deal with the relatively narrow range of enterprises so universally considered to be of community value that municipalities should be favorably disposed towards their inclusion. These uses are considered to be of value because they fundamentally serve the public good and promote the general welfare. These are typically included hospitals, schools, childcare centers, group homes, wind and solar, photovoltaic energy facilities and structures. So the reason that this is considered inherently beneficial is specifically because buses support schools, supporting public education, supporting, supporting the public good. Now, with respect to the negative criteria, the courts have laid out specifically in the case of SEKA versus the Board of Adjustment, Townshipal Law, that what's known as the SEKA[1726.87] balancing test to demonstrate how the, we must satisfy the negative criteria. Specifically, there are four prongs to this test. First prong is to identify the public interest at stake. In our case, as I've said, the public interest at stake is the provision for busing schoolchildren within the community and region. The second is identifying the detrimental effects of, which would ensue from the granting of the variance. With respect to our application, I argue that there's no real significant detriments we haven't identified in connection with this use. The proposed bus storage and maintenance will be located toward the rear of the property within an already disturbed area of the ER zone. Additionally, this portion of the SD1 ER zone is not located proximate to any residential uses. As I noted, the residences are quite a distance away, and it's buffered via a creek and associated wetlands to the nearest home. View of the proposed bus storage area will be buffered via the existing building. The nature of the SD1 district anticipates any uses related to traffic, noise, and trash. A portion of the lot within the ER zone is previously granted a use variance to permit a contractor yard. Therefore, it can argue that its use for commercial purposes has already been found appropriate. Finally, the property is located in an industrial area along Industrial Drive, which is directly accessed off Route 35. Therefore, bus traffic will be limited to roadways capable of accommodating bus traffic. The third prong is to determine whether it can reduce any detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions on the use, such as screening, setbacks, and parking. Again, there really were no identified detriments in connection with the proposed use, because it is in an industrial area. And finally, the board must weigh the positive against the negative criteria. The application proposes school bus transportation use in an appropriate area of the community, one that accommodates traffic, noise, and maintenance requirements associated with use. Use is also a permitted and anticipated use within the SD1 district, meaning the governing bodies were determined that this type of use is permitted in this area in the SD1 district. Therefore, we opine that the positives outweigh the negatives of this application. Now with respect to the bulk variances we seek tonight, we could cite the case of Price Edgy, which supports that bulk relief in cases involving use variances are subsumed as the bulk standards for the underlying district would not be anticipated, the conditions associated with proposed use. However, we can support the bulk use relief required under the C variance criteria as well. With respect to the C variances sought, there are two tests. The first one is that due to the lot's unique shape and topographical conditions, or the result of pre-existing conditions, the strict application of the ordinance will result in practical difficulties, which are defined as undue hardships upon the applicant, such that relief is warranted. This is the C1 or the hardship variance. The second standard is known as the flexible C variance, where the purpose of the land use law advanced by the deviation from the zoning order requirements, and the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any detriment. Both standards need to satisfy the negative criteria test, indicating that no substantial detrimental impact would be derived from approving the deviations requested, and that the relief requested would not undermine the intent or purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. The request to maintain the existing side yard setback, again, where 25 feet is required, where 24 feet exist, and we're not proposing exacerbating it, would qualify under the C1 criteria. This is an existing condition that is proposed to remain and would not be exacerbated by the current application. I also offer, there's case law on this, the Harlow case, which indicates that exists, that an existing building, in that case, was an existing foundation, but an existing building does constitute a unique condition of the property. I also offer that, under the C2 criteria, we, that the applicant, that the, hold on one second. The balance of the variance relief requested would qualify under the C2 criteria. Under the C2 criteria, the applicant, as I said, must demonstrate what is commonly referred to as the balancing test, or the application meets the burdens under both the positive and negative criteria. Under the burdens of proof for the positive criteria, that applicant must demonstrate that the applicant, application relates to a specific piece of property, that the purpose of the MOU will be advanced by the deviation, and that the benefits of deviation would outweigh any detriments. With respect to the negative criteria, must demonstrate that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without substantial impairment to the intent and purposes of own plan and zoning ordinance. Application this evening seeks, again, to reiterate, to permit a landscape ratio of .18, where .21 exists and .40 is required, proposed ratio a result of the proposed parking within the industrial drive frontage, and of course, to permit parking within the front yard. The application presents a better zoning alternative, as it allows the site to accommodate all of the parking on-site, reducing landscape reproaches at this new parking area. I also note, as you can see from A4, that it's not uncommon for the users along this roadway to maintain parking and/or loading areas within their front yards. And as I took a look around the site, when I visited the site, there definitely are numerous parking areas and front yards, including the corner area at the Route 35, but there are other areas with a long industrial way that have a front yard parking. The application seeks a design waiver to permit the rear parking area to remain gravel, spaces with land, as we noted, by wheel stops. With respect to the negative criteria and any substantial detriments, I don't see any. Conditions proposed are prevalent within the existing neighborhood and allow the site to operate efficiently. Traffic, noise, and trash are all anticipated within the SD1 district, wherein the parking lot is proposed. Again, it's a permitted use. Governing body has already understood what the use entails, and has designated this the SD1 area to, or SD1 zone, to allow that use. Finally, the applicant seeks to relieve from Condition 13, which has limited the use of the rear outdoor storage area to existing uses. This includes the granite storage and vehicle storage. The application this evening seeks to permit conversion of the space to use as a school bus facility. Proposed space is already disturbed, and its utilization for inherently beneficial use provides for an improvement over the existing conditions. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Let me see if a professional has any.
I do not. Thank you.
Board members on my left. Right ahead, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. In A3, the frontage, is this proposed, what it's going to look like?
Correct.
So this is going to be under construction? You're gonna, you're gonna, if you look at A3, and then if you look at A4, it's, if you look at the frontage on both, so is this a proposed construction that's going to take place? You're gonna build these bays?
A3 is proposed.
Oh, it's proposed?
A3 is proposed.
Oh, proposed.
A4 is a Google map of the existing conditions on the site. Yes.
Yes, and let's address on A4, the parking. You notice that large truck in front? I don't think there's parking on industrial area. Because I couldn't stop. Is that something that you'll have constantly with this large trucks? Why don't you just pull in the back?
I'm not sure, he's not the operations guy, so I don't think he's the professional answering these questions.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's necessarily our truck. It just happens to be parked there. We have buses.
I didn't notice any truck parking in front of the building when I visited the site.
A4, A4 shows it.
Yes, but I didn't notice it tonight. I assume it's public street.
Did you ever park on that street?
No.
I don't think there's parking. There's not even sidewalks.
I don't believe there is parking. Again, if it's illegally parked, again, I, I can't even say if it's our vehicle or
So, this is, this is proposed, this, you're gonna build, this is gonna be a construction.
Yes, A4 is proposed.
Proposed.
A3 is.
A3, A3 is proposed.
A4 is existing conditions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rizzo?
I'm good.
Pleasure.
Yeah, you know, you're mentioning all these positive criterias for the buses and the public good. I don't know that these buses necessarily, you know, are a bad thing to have stored there, but you're also doing repairs. And the repairs aren't inherently good to the public. That could be done somewhere else, or offsite from this site. So you could have bus storage, but not repairs to the buses.
I don't think that's prohibited in the zone. I mean, it's the SD zone.
SD1 inherently good for the public good.
Well.
Repairing the bu, how's repairing this bus?
Buses don't work if they're not repaired.
Okay, but how about?
It's accessory to the bus itself.
And you're right next to an ER1 zone.
But my, my understanding, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
And again, I don't want to disagree with you.
No, no.
That, that use, the repairs are taking place in the SD1 zone, where it is permitted as of right.
In the building.
Correct. There'll be, my understanding is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the bus storage is what's, the parking area in the back is the only area we're talking about.
Right, that's what I wanted, I wasn't clear that no repairs are gonna be done in the back, where the buses are just sitting to be taken out.
Only in the building.
Excellent.
So, and it's really because of that, we have to seek the D1 variance. And again, there's a significant buffer, as I mentioned, and, you know, between that, between the parking area and the residential homes.
I believe, just to make it clear, I think that should be made as a condition of approval.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I think, it has, that the repairs have to be done inside. Because I'm a little bit worried about oil leaking out, you know, you got gravel there now. That's all there is. And there is an aquifer near there. Whether you stay, there is an aquifer.
No, no, we would accept that as a condition, because they, they don't do that. They do it inside where there's the spill containment area. They're not gonna go do it out.
Well, I, I would just like that in the paper.
Sure.
That'll be a condition of approval if you get that far.
Mrs. Andrews?
My concern was the same with the oil, with the buses. I'm sorry.
Please.
No, I had a similar concern to the shovel there, the oil leaking to the buses, especially because it is so close to an environmental area. And also, I understand from the laws that childcare, group homes, and all of this have a special thing. I, I don't quite put this in the same category as I would with putting, I know school buses are very, very important, but there are other tenants in the building, and there's just, to me, something is crossing. Correct me if I'm mistaken.
Yeah, I will correct you, because there's a case law right on point that says buses are inherently beneficial. They didn't make it up. It's actually, the courts have decided that.
I understand that. I just, I just find it, putting it together with other tenants in a building, we don't know what anyone else is doing.
I don't think that's relevant, because they're all permitted to be there, and they're already there.
But once again, we're dealing with buses that transport children.
Well, the buses are empty when they come and leave the site. So the children aren't coming to the site.
No, no, I understand that, but the repair's being done, and they're picking up children and taking children home, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not talking about them bringing children to the site. I'm talking about the buses, empty, being repaired.
Inside the building, as we've agreed to as a condition.
Okay, as long as that is a condition.
Absolutely.
And that is also a permitted use within the SD1 zone. So all of that, so that's where, we can't even discuss, it's again, the governing body's already made the decision that that's, should be allowed there.
Are there buses now in the ER zone?
I think, I believe there are some buses back there, yes.
That's part of the use variance application, sure.
Yeah, that's what we're seeking to, for approval for this night, yes. But it's, the only piece that we're really seeking approval for is the parking of the buses. If, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, but parking of the buses in that rear small portion that is in the ER zone. Everything else, including the other uses in the building, from what I understand, are permitted uses.
Okay.
So including, and the bus transportation use is a permitted use. And what the hardship here, in essence, is, is you do have that little piece that's in the ER zone, for whatever reason, that's in the back of the property. It's just, the lot's split between the two zones.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, just real quick, how many, how many sites in the back are in ER zone? Like, how many spots?
You know what? I don't have that information right readily.
I can probably figure it out relatively.
Yeah, we can, you can figure it out, though. You have the.
That's okay. It's under question.
It, looks like the line, looks like the line is, yeah, it looks like the line is, is where the fence is. It appears it's, it's where the fence is now. So it would be.
She's asking what other properties.
Yeah, it's, the one's next to us, you mean?
No, no, I just, like, the very back part, which is closest to the ER zone. There's what, like, three or four spots?
No, 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 not the.
Entire bus parking area is in that zone.
If I may use A3, it's everything behind the fence.
Is it everything behind the fence?
This year, so the whole.
You can't modify how many spots were gonna be used. All right.
Yeah, well, we have it delineated on here, but.
It doesn't come through very easily, right here, but you can see it's everything behind that fence, you know?
Yeah, everything behind that, it's, what it looks like is everything behind that fence line is in the ER zone. Everything to the front of that, including the entire building, is in the SD1 zone.
Yeah, and that, that, up on the screen's showing it.
Okay, good.
That gives you an idea.
Yeah, thank you. They're all gonna be in the ER zone.
Parking, yes. Anybody else with any questions to this witness? You don't have anybody else you're putting on tonight?
No, that's all the.
What are you gonna do about the modification of prior resolution? You're asking, you're seeking it to be removed, right?
Well, we could either have it removed or modified, as suggested in the.
I think we'd likely probably have it modified.
Modified, yeah.
I mean, if we could go to page six, I'm sorry, five, number seven, I think, was where it is spoken to. If that were amenable to the applicant, I think it would probably be the best way to go. Obviously, he might, what materials can they store there? They may, I don't know if they're gonna store any back there.
No, we just wanna store the buses.
Yeah.
That's the only thing they plan on storing back there.
So the modification might be just buses.
So it's the number and the type, which will be modified?
Well, I'm, I'm on page six. Any comments?
Comment number seven.
Here, you can read your mind.
Number seven.
It speaks to the prior resolution.
Yeah, why do I have, why, okay, why do I have a different?
And I'm guessing, Ms. Jennings, that the township probably feels that if this use is now abandoned, and, you know, there are no buses there, there was obviously prior bins back there for construction, and that was the limitation.
Contractor's yard had bins.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Trailers.
Right. So when we, I was there for that one, and I believe you were there for that, and that was to limit that amount. So I think we wanna leave that in there, and I don't, you two are the legal minds. I don't know how to say it, or what we need to put in writing, but I would hope that there could be an agreement on that. So it covers the fact that if, for some reason, the bus company moves out, and somebody wants to start storing materials back there again, besides probably having to come here before us, at least they know what the limitation was.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're here, because that condition exists. So even if we were permitted, we would still have to come here to lift the condition.
Understood, but the, the site could be abandoned, the use could be abandoned.
Sure.
Okay. So could we agree that we could work something out on that, if that were?
I'm sure that Mr. Dassie and I can come up with the appropriate language.
Thank you.
Would that satisfy the township?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Board members, does that satisfy you? So we keep in effect, to a degree, what the prior resolution was? We kind of protect it, even though it's not gonna be, there's no reason for enforcement?
It's still the spirit of that, of that condition.
Right.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No, just the condition that the variance isn't gonna transfer to some, to another thing.
Yeah, it could not, rightfully so. I mean, someone could do whatever they want, but the resolution would prohibit that. And, you know, I understand that this is kind of, because it's a split zone, this is the whole reason that you're here. And I would say, Ms. Jennings, it's, it'd speak to the fact that all the other issues are allowed in the building, and they are, by right, they're, and there are in his zone, that they can, they can do that. And I wouldn't think, and I hope not, and we'll put that on the record, that obviously, if there was approval, no, no repairs would be done in the, in the SD zone.
Outside.
Outside.
I'm, I'm sorry, in the, in the ER zone. ER zone, I had that back.
Correct, yes, we would agree to that, absolutely.
You're not gonna put anybody else on. I don't know what your plans are gonna be, but I have to go to a public portion, and we'll come back, and we can talk about what you wanna do tonight and/or in the future, okay? This is. Right sheet, here it is. This is 54-2024Z Phoenix Realty. This is physical location's 12 Industrial Drive, key port mailing address, but it's in the township of Ulrich. Major preliminary fights, final site plan for the storage of buses. If there's anyone here in the courtroom that wants, wants to be heard in this matter, please raise your hand or stand. This is likely the only time, if you had an, if you have anything to say, it would be tonight. This matter is likely going to be decided. Okay, I see none, I'm gonna close the public portion. Counselor?
Nothing else, sir. You've received, you've heard uncontroverted expert testimony from Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Hudak. They're going to comply, generally speaking, with the review letter that we've just talked about. We talked about that modifying that number, our condition number 13 of the prior resolution. No, no repairs outside, no repairs for sure in the ER zone, everything will be inside the building. And it looks like they've increased the parking spaces to the, they've addressed a lot of those comments that we had back in May.
And we found out what the new loading spot is gonna be, and it's gonna be a And we found out what the new loading spot is gonna be, and it's gonna be a twenty-foot flatbed, probably normal, like a tow truck, a flatbed tow truck, to bring those parts in and out.
Oh, and just the drainage that you mentioned.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that we would investigate the drainage in the rear, and if any improvements are required, same as with the guide rail.
So from an engineering standpoint, we don't have any disagreement. We can agree to agree. Okay. And everything could be worked out. The one that you're gonna do on site.
Do two, the, the stormwater and the, the guide rail, we'll review on site.
It's an agreement?
Yes.
And as far as planning, I'm satisfied, obviously, that this classic bus company ruling, and I would agree, and whether I agree or not, it's, it is a matter of case law, and we understand that. Yes, they are inherently useful, but I think what was said, the planner made a comment that they could be used for senior homes, transportation of buses in general. These buses that I see and have seen there are just merely school buses. That's, that's all they're used for.
Correct.
So I don't think that there's any even special needs buses there along that. Yeah, I didn't see any from my vantage point. It is a highly, highly, if you haven't been there, heavily traveled work zone. It's busy beyond belief. And I guess I spent about fifteen minutes there, or twenty minutes about, maybe a month or so ago. And it was nerve-wracking. I mean, it's a constant, constant go. So I, I hope that we have taken all the precautions, and I think we have, by making sure the traffic's going in one way and out the other. And I think that the parking back there will be regulated, at least from what the property owner has said, self-regulated, so that it's not gonna spill over. Any, any repairs, obviously, we know are gonna be inside. Other than that, I don't know if you would like me to ask the, I won't poll the members, but I will ask if they have any final comments or any problems with the application as it stands now. And if so, that'll be your determination to make, whether you wanna call for a vote or not. So for the last time, I'm gonna ask members, if there's anything specific that you want cleared up in your mind, please bring it to the attention while we have the experts here. On my left, Mr. Scogno, no, no? Mr. Izzo?
No.
Vice Chair?
No, I'm good.
And Mrs. Andrews? Okay, Counselor, from the township standpoint?
The only question I have is, if you look at the screen, the North Arrow has the initials W H. Is that the Walt Hopkins North Arrow?
It is.
It isn't, he didn't, by the, by the, by the way, it was done on eight-six, not on, not on July, whatever he said. You're not gonna pull one past Mr. Dasty, that's for sure. Nothing else you have, right?
Thank you.
That's up to you now. Of course, we, you realize we do have only five voters. And it'd be totally up to you whether you wanna call for a vote tonight, whether you wanna return after people have had the opportunity to either watch this on YouTube, where you can find it, or read a transcript.
I think I'd like to go for the vote tonight.
Okay.
I think we put on a good case, and you do sound like you have a very busy docket. A lot of people weren't, not here this evening, so they're gonna be at your next meeting. So we would hope that we had answered and addressed everybody's questions and concerns, and respectfully.
Well, I certainly think you've met the criteria. You know, I believe the use variance is a given, and I don't see that there's a problem with the bulks. So that road's not gonna change.
Right.
It's high, it's a heavily active work zone in there, almost on the road and off the road. So I do agree with Mr. Scogno. I think there's a lot of illegal parkers. That's not our jurisdiction. That would be the jurisdiction of the police to maintain that. But apparently, it works pretty good, because as, as I said, I sat there, and nobody crashed, and everybody was going about their business. I'm personally satisfied, but once again.
You know, I, I think we would like to go for the vote.
Okay. All right, Board members, this would all be decided on a D one. The bulks, I think, would be, will do if the D one passes. So this would be for the use, because of the fact that there's the ER zone in the back, the split zone. Someone in favor of moving for the approval of the use variance?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrew's second.
Ms. Andrews' seconds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And can we take the bulks as a whole?
Sure.
Okay. And, and all the bulks, as, as mentioned in our part of the report. Someone wanna move them?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrews' second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
I know you're gonna work with, in conjunction with the partners here at the town, and with professionals to make sure that this all works out to everyone's interest. It was a great presentation, and my vote is yes as well.
All right, thank you so much.
Do we need to vote formally on the site plan application?
I think we do. I believe we do. So it's preliminary and final, preliminary first, as to preliminary site plan. Someone?
Chevalier.
And someone else?
Izzo.
Okay, Mr. Izzo's seconds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And as to final site plan?
Izzo? Move it.
Chevalier's second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And once again, thank you, Ms. Jennings, for the presentation.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
We appreciate the fact that the owner was here as well, just to clarify some things.
And recover.
Please be careful.
Correct. Good night, Bob.
Right. While they clear up the general public comments, is anybody here in the courtroom wanna be heard on the matter of significance to the board? Done, okay? In that case, I'm gonna close the general public comment portion. Board members, anything you personally have to bring before the board at this point, before we call for an adjournment?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Adjournments. I mean, I travel from Old Bridge to Keyport, all over town, going through the agenda. And then come tonight, and all we have is adjournments. It's more and more and more. Last time it was four. Now we have three. And all we see is adjourned. Did the applicant adjourn it?
Yes, that's what it says.
No, no, it says the application has been adjourned. At the, at top, it says adjourned. Can we have a notation? Applicant adjourned?
I received a communication today from Vina that she had suggested to the applicant that she, that the applicant needed to adjourn it, because she didn't feel confident what, what was being presented that she should. So technically, the applicant had to request the adjournment, but it was suggested by our staff.
We don't have the power to do that.
I mean.
No, we, we don't control the agenda, I mean. I, and I understand that. I wish that we had not had the state of emergency, because we lost a whole night that we have to now push forward. But that was not by us. The governor decided to.
And, and these adjournments go to the next meeting, go to the next, and now we're backed up, and then they ask for special meetings.
You're absolutely correct.
So here we are again. I mean, can we at least know why they were adjourned?
Apparently, they were deficient in whatever they had presented to the.
According to Vina, yes. She was not sat, according to Vina, your, our planner.
Thank you, by the way.
She wasn't satisfied with what was being proposed.
All three of them?
I, I can't, I, there were two.
Two.
Yeah. Two of the three I know about, yes.
The applications were also adjourned, like, I think, yesterday and this morning. So unfortunately, that kind of does put that timing on a crunch for everybody. So it is kind of unfortunate. But unfortunately, when we don't get the review memos also back, because everybody is busy, our office is, as you guys have seen, pretty busy.
And don't forget, Maureen has, wasn't here the last couple of days, which might have slowed things up at, at the town.
Yeah, so we've kind of been managing between me and Danny to kind of let everybody know. And thankfully, Danny has taken kind of the lead on that one for me, because I am new at this, so.
I just found out tonight about the last two. I mean.
Uh, anything else?
Yes, I'm not done. I'm not done.
Oh, you got more? Okay.
I would like to bring back that we have the allowance to visit the homes or the applicant's address.
Vice Chair, and just ask me about that. I wanna make sure that if there's not a waiver or any part of the application process. If there's not, if there's not, I'll talk to Maureen, and we'll prepare a waiver form to include it in the application, so that applicant allows you to go on the property. I do it in other towns, so if it's not here, we'll take care of it. Oh, you ought to have to sign that before you get shot. I'll prepare like a waiver that they'll sign, allowing you to do that.
And the last thing I wanted to bring up is that some of the applicants, we have an expiration date. They come before us. So I don't know if they have the continuous.
Oh, yes. No, no, no. Everyone who was adjourned today has agreed to a new, a new date, and they've all agreed that the, the time clock within which we have to make a decision has been told, so it's not being run, so to speak. So the expiration date is now at least the new date of the new hearing.
No, there's a form.
Like, we heard, like, we heard Phoenix tonight, where he's trying to explain is their expiration date is actually six twenty-five, twenty-five.
They agreed.
But they agreed to extend it.
Their original.
Yeah, but they agreed to extend it. Yeah, now, maybe the agenda could have indicated that it's a little longer, but we're good. And they all sign a, a form agreeing to toll the time period in which we have to make the decision. That's.
And what is this waiver that you're talking about?
Well, by statute, you have to make a decision within, well, it depends on which type of application. You have to make a decision within, I'm gonna say, forty-five days. If you don't make it, on some applications, it's forty-five, sometimes, sometimes of applications, it's sixty or ninety, whatever. But if you don't make a decision within that time period, they could, it's very, very rare, they could go to court and say, I gotta, I have an approval by default. They didn't hear me, Judge, so I'm automatically approved. The statute allows for that. It never happens, but the statute allows for that. This, by tolling the time period, the forty-five days or the sixty days, is extended.
I was referring to the waiver of visiting the applicant's address.
The waiver of what?
To, to visit the applicant.
Site.
Go to the site.
It's going to be a standard form to submit.
Yeah.
The applicant is going to have a form in that he submits, and he will sign the waiver, saying, yes, we can visit the property, in which case, we can all go and walk it, instead of just looking at it from the road.
Yeah.
So it'll be in the packet that they submit back.
So we'll see that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll get it to you. I mean, I, I'll talk to Maureen on Monday, and we'll, between the two of us, we'll prepare a form.
But I mean, you could also call to see if the waiver's been signed by the applicant for us to go on.
I'll have Maureen ask, I'll have Maureen distribute it to everybody for the next meeting. If we have to amend the bylaws to include it, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? I'll call for an adjournment. Someone move it?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
All in favor?
All in.
We stay adjourned.